Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call to order the December 11 Shelby Township Planning Commission meeting. Secretary Moore, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Snyder?
Here.
Mr. Meredith?
Here.
Ms. Baker?
Here.
Ms. Cassali?
Here.
Mr. Repone is absent. Mr. Luray is absent. Chairman Moffett is absent, and filling in for him is Chairman Turner.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Very good. Also with us tonight, we have Planning Director Julie Misich, Associate Planner Nick Fiore, and our Township Attorney Bob Kirk, with one of his other associates Mitch Paquette. First item on our agenda is approval of the agenda. If I don't hear any questions or objections or changes, a motion to approve the agenda is in order.
It's moved.
Been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Next item is approval of the minutes from our November 13, 2023, meeting.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and seconded. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Tonight, we have two items, one site plan review and one public hearing. The first is a site plan number 23-35, Frank DePoneo, DNR Land Development LLC. It's a vacant parcel located on the north side of 23 Mile Road, east of Mound Road, an industrial retail building. I see Mr. Snyder is here, so Pete, let us know what you're doing, what you're planning for the area.
Yeah. Good evening. Again, Pete Snyder, Urban Land Consultants, 8800, 23 Mile Road, Shelby Township, Michigan, representing the applicant Frank DePoneo, who is here in the audience with me if anything comes up. It's a very straightforward project. The parcel is about an acre and a quarter. He's proposing a multi-tenant building there. If you want to know what it's going to look like, you can go right next door. It's exactly the same building, just one lot over. There is one difference a little bit, though. In the back of the building, the parking on this one has been rearranged. There's cross-access to unit number two and just a circulation so they can get through there. The reason for that is that it's additional parking, mutual parking in general, because one of the things in that first building they were finding is depending on the tenant, they were having a little bit of problems with parking. So this layout is actually, I think, 10 or 11 more parking spaces than is on unit seven. And of course, the applicant owns both units, so it makes the mutual agreement easy to record. So with that, I am certainly available for any questions you may have.
Okay, well, we'll go over to, was it Julie or Nick who did this one? Nick, go ahead.
Thank you, Chairman.
Mm-hmm.
As Mr. Snyder said, it's a multi-tenant building. It's proposed on an industrially zoned piece of land. So with that, the, you know, finished product could open itself up to a, you know, large array of businesses, ranging from retail, commercial, restaurants, office, to even industrial uses in that district. So very versatile building. As Mr. Snyder said, you can see pretty much exactly what it's going to look like by looking into the building just to the east of it there. It's a well-designed building, a lot of brick, a lot of good accents there to kind of, you know, make it, you know, make that corridor a little bit more attractive as we're getting more builds along that 23 Mile Road there. The building itself satisfies the intent of the light manufacturing district, which is designed to accommodate industrial operations wholly within a building and to limit those external physical effects to the immediate area. This building does quite, does that, limits the outdoor storage. There's none proposed with it. The site plan also satisfies the master plan for the area, which notes it as an industrial-commercial mix. The proposed building kind of satisfies all the actionable plans with the master plan there. With that, we did do a preliminary review on this project, so we satisfied, re-reviewed and satisfied a lot of the original site plan review comments. I only have four here for you. Two of them are pretty straightforward. As Mr. Snyder said, they did add parking here to kind of, you know, share parking between this building and the building to the north of it. With that, we'll need a shared access agreement, a shared parking agreement between the two properties. Since it's the same owner, I don't expect that to be too much of an issue. And also adding that parking, you know, helps both properties whenever there's peak parking demand for those two businesses or those two buildings there. Besides that, the, one of the other comments is that the ingress and egress at a public thoroughfare is required to be 30 feet per the zoning ordinance. However, the zoning ordinance does not contain a specific standard for private road ingress and egress. The applicant is proposing a 24-foot wide and 26-foot wide driveway for the traffic, for the location to provide for two-way traffic and emergency access. The fire department is okay with the widths as proposed, and they're also similar to the widths on the property immediately east, too. So I don't see that being too much of a problem, but since we don't have a specific standard, we require the planning commission to review and approve that driveway width there. Besides that, there's a limited use of drive-it on the south facade of the building. The planning commission does not allow the use of drive-it without express approval from the planning commission. There's a large degree of brick and window space, and it's a well-designed building, so I think the drive-it here, you know, adds to the architectural aesthetic component there. Other than that, it's a very straightforward site plan. There's not too much else to discuss.
Okay, there are two issues we need to look at. First of all, the use of the drive-it on the building. I don't really have any issue with that. It's really a minor use near the top of the building. Anyone have any objections to that? Then on the driveway, 24 and 26 versus 30 feet, fire department's okay. Julie, you think that's appropriate for the, okay. So let's say the planning commission will review that and approve those two as well. Anybody have any questions from Mr. Snyder? Hearing none. Anything else you want to say, Pete?
Nope.
Okay. If not, a motion is in order.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Snyder.
Move to approve site plan 2335 Frank DePoneo for DNR Land Development LLC. Vacant parcel number 23-07-16-339-001, located on the north side of 23 Mile Road, east of Mound Road, industrial retail building. The approval is subject to the submission of final site plans addressing all department engineer and planning commission comments.
Support.
Motion by Commissioner Snyder, supported by Commissioner Meredith. Any other questions on the motion?
I do just have one correction.
Yes, Lisa, go ahead.
If I may, one correction to the motion. It was to the parcel number 23-07-16-399-001. I think it was read as 339, so just correcting that for the record.
Okay, you're okay?
Sure.
Motion maker's seconded, or, okay. Any other questions on the motion? If not, Commissioner Snyder?
Yes.
Commissioner Meredith?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Cassali?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Have a good Christmas. Next item is site plan special use number 23-38, Bert Koppel, Home Instead, 51432 Van Dyke Avenue. It's north of 23 Mile Road, on the east side of Van Dyke Avenue. This is an adult daycare facility. This is a public hearing, so I'll ask Secretary Moore to read the notice as published.
Charter Township of Shelby, notice of public hearing. Notice is hereby given that the planning commission for the Charter Township of Shelby, McComb County, Michigan, has received a request for approval of an addition to an existing special land use site. Applicant Bert Koppel, Home Instead, 51432 Van Dyke Avenue, Shelby Township, Michigan, 48316. Proposed use, adult daycare center. Location, 51432 Van Dyke Avenue, north of 23 Mile Road, east side of Van Dyke Avenue. Site plan SLU number 23-38. Sidwell number is 23-07-15-304-022. Legal description is as follows. Planning commission will meet on Monday, December 11, 2023, at 7:00 PM in the Shelby Municipal Building, Boardroom 52700 Van Dyke Avenue, Shelby Township, Michigan, 48316, 5867267243, for the purpose of holding a public hearing on the site plan special land use. The application for the site plan special land use may be examined at the Planning and Zoning Department in the municipal building, Monday through Friday, from 8:30 AM to 5:00 PM. Written comments may be submitted to the planning commission at the above address prior to the hearing. Oral comments will be heard during the public hearing. This notice is provided pursuant to the requirements of Michigan Public Act 110 of 2006 as amended. Shelby Township Planning Commission, Jerome Moffett, Chair, Raquel Moore, Secretary. This was published in the Shelby Utica News on November 22, 2023. There were 67 property owners and one applicant were notified by first-class mail on November 21, 2023.
Thank you. Mr. Kirk, does the publication meet all legal requirements as mandated in local ordinance and state statute?
Yes, it does.
Okay. Do we have any, would you explain the uses under the present zoning and whether this is appropriate for the area?
Current zoning is 01. This is our office. Professionalists provide the usual type of professional services, doctors, real estate lawyers, something along those lines. So their use currently meets, and it's a special land use for this request.
Okay, thank you. Do we get any, does anybody have any questions for Mr. Kirk? Did we get any correspondence, Secretary Moore?
No, we did not, Mr. Chair.
Format for the public hearing will be as follows. The applicant or petitioner or his representative will give a presentation stating the reasons for the request. The commissioners may then ask questions of the petitioner. The floor will then be open to the public to come down, let us know whether you approve it or don't like the project as planned, and then the petitioner can make any concluding comments. So you're here. Give us your name and address. Make sure you sign in afterwards if you haven't already.
Sure.
And let us know what you're planning to do at this location.
Absolutely. I've, can I pass these out? Is that okay?
Thank you.
My name is Bert Koppel. I'm the owner of Home Instead in Shelby Township, as well as the franchise location in Claussen, Michigan. My home address is 42461 Eldon Avenue in Clinton Township, Michigan. Thank you for taking the opportunity to allow me to present today. Home Instead has been servicing the community since 1999, 25 years of serving seniors, helping them age in place and live at home independently and safely. What we have found, especially since COVID, is that there's been a huge shift in the home care industry. The majority of our workers, who were once 55-plus, have exited the workforce. And so we're dealing with a labor crisis, which is causing prices to go up significantly when it comes to in-home care. And we have found, unfortunately, the reason I went into this business was because of my grandmother. She was a short, 4'11" Italian woman, and I loved her so much, and so I hated the fact that she had to stay at home. And so I was able to be part of this franchise system to help her age in place and stay at home. The challenge today is that in-home care has almost become impossibly expensive for those in the middle class and the lower class. And so we're looking to expand the service line, which would allow us to do adult daycare. Adult daycare is essentially like daycare, except it allows seniors to be dropped off at our location to be provided with care between the hours of 8:30 AM and 5:30 PM, Monday through Friday. And it allows us to provide care from a 1 to 5 basis, as opposed to a 1 to 1 ratio inside the home. This is important because it drastically reduces the cost of senior care. There are many working adults who are part of the sandwich generation that have to take care of both children at home and also parents that they're concerned about. Is mom or dad taking their medications? Are they bathing? Are they just sitting around at home watching TV all day? Have they fallen? If I call them, they don't answer the phone. This provides an opportunity for us to help make sure that seniors are still aging in place and living productive lives. By productive, what I mean by this is it allows us to provide safety, stimulation, as well as purpose. Seniors need to take their medications. They have to be taken on time. They can't be confused. Stimulation is important because many seniors, especially when they cross a threshold of 80 years old, can begin to experience day-night reversal. What that means is they tend to nap and rest and stay solitude throughout the day, which means now they're anxious and awake at night. So that can be problematic, especially when it comes to working adults. If you're having to care for an elderly loved one that has been sleeping all day, and they haven't been engaged, now they're up all night, which can now cause issues for the workforce. So what we're looking to do is we're looking to essentially take the office space that we have. It's a, if we were able to hold almost 14 office workers who were there, but now, post-COVID, we've been able to reduce through efficiencies the amount of space we need in our building. And we have three large rooms that are now open and available where we could accommodate seniors during the day to provide that care in a facility where we're already at. So we're not looking to make any changes, modifications to the building. For example, we just started one in Claussen, Michigan. You can see on the third page, there are pictures of what we did inside that building. So you got, you know, great leather chairs. We have activities. There's a place for them to eat. We're not doing many meal preparations, so there's no health code issues there. They have to bring their own lunches. We don't provide breakfast or dinner. But we're simply there to make sure that they're safe and engaged in activities during the day, so they can be dropped off in the morning and then picked up later on in the afternoon. Activities can range from anything from enrichment programming. And what's unique about our situation, there are a couple of other adult daycare programs in McComb. Matter of fact, there's only three. One is in, one is in Clinton Township, one is in Sterling Heights, and then the other one is located in St. Clair Shores. There is not one in Shelby Township. All of those tend to focus on Medicaid/Medicare waiver programs, so they're dependent upon government funding, which is great. So those who are lower income can get that access to it, and they also focus on VA benefits, which we will also be looking at as well. I'm also a veteran myself. But we're really trying to focus in on that, on the middle-class demographic. For those who are able to still be able to afford this, we tend to not work with Medicaid/Medicare. Home Instead never has. The reason being is because when you tend to do that, there's many more regulations that come into play, which can often drive up the cost of care. So we tend to focus on that private duty pay. But again, this will allow us to care for seniors at about 50% of the price of what our in-home care charges for. You know, Shelby Township, right now, 20% of the city is over the age of 65. The population is aging. And with that, there's going to become fewer and fewer workers to support that aging population. So this is an opportunity to give us to test the service line in a building that we already own, that is safe, to see if it's going to work. And if we can prove that the service line does work and the model does work, we're more than happy to then re-approach this and try to expand it within the city than also other communities that we serve. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Koppel, I have a question. You, how long has the, I might have missed it. How long has your Claussen facility been open?
The Claussen facility just opened a week ago.
Okay.
Yes.
How has it been going so far?
Good. So we have two clients that have signed up. We literally just started doing marketing for it this week. We had to go through a similar process with the city of Claussen. And so we just, you know, those are the two natural places for us to begin. Claussen does not have adult daycare. We have a building that's there, and it's the same exact situation. We have about a quarter of our building was empty because we didn't need the employees anymore because of new technology inefficiencies that came out of COVID. So we're trying to put that space to the best use possible.
Okay. Anyone have any questions for Mr. Koppel?
I do.
Go ahead, Raquel.
Yes.
I, I think it's a great concept. I, I'm all in on this. I could have used this for my mom.
Sure.
A few years ago. I do have a question. So I did drive by the building, and I was just concerned. There's not a lot of, well, in the back, as far as going outside or having
Yeah.
any activities outside, or even a picnic, or anything.
Sure.
So is that something that obviously isn't going to happen?
Yeah, so obviously, the one thing you have to make sure you remember, a lot of times cities, they have, there's protocol written for daycare for children, which is totally different than what you need for seniors. I'm going to be very honest with you. My job is to mitigate risk. And so when you go into an environment where you cannot control the risk, you know, outside, for example, you, there could be slip-and-fall risks. There could be hazards, walking in the grass. Simply transitioning from sidewalk to grass for a senior that has balance issues can be detrimental. And so what we're trying to do is we're simply trying to create a safe space for them indoors. Let's be honest, for six months out of the year, we wouldn't be doing anything outdoors anyways, simply because of the drastic temperature changes that we have. So yeah, we're starting off right now with just indoor programming, music therapy, physical therapy, pet therapy, that type of thing, to keep them engaged. It doesn't mean that we couldn't do something outside, but for this location, that's not the intention or plan. We want to prove that this model works, and then once that happens, then we're more than happy to find another location to potentially expand, which could include some outdoor space, but it would not be a traditional outdoor model like you may be thinking, if that makes sense. It might be a couple of, you know, park benches, maybe an outdoor opportunity for grilling or whatever the case is. But again, when seniors are engaged, especially with trying to engage their fine motor skills and trying to get them involved with some type of activity, usually they're going to be doing things like chair aerobics, things that involve them sitting down so they're engaged with their upper body, because we don't want them to lose balance. And so, yes, outdoor would be fantastic and a great thing to do, but for us to start this off and pilot this, we don't think it's the best measure for us.
And you did mention that, which I'm glad to see, that was one of my big questions for you tonight, that there will be an RN on staff?
Yes, yep.
So at all times, do you have a medical professional on?
No, it's, we have an RN that's on staff. It doesn't mean they're in the building 100% of the time, because we have other clients that we still service in the community. So they're still doing quality assurance visits out in the community. But if something were to come up inside the building, again, we have a general manager. We have three other people in the building that are working. We have the dedicated care worker, the adult daycare coordinator, who is working with these folks who are there. And we're all trained. So we're all Home Instead trained. We've all been through the training. I'm a certified home health aide, even as the owner of the company. So we know how to handle things like transfers, incontinence care, all those things that may come up. And obviously, if there's a medical emergency, even if there was one at home, you're calling 911. If somebody falls, you call 911, because you don't know what happens when somebody falls. So even if there's an RN that's present, they can observe and report, but they're not interpreting, right? That's still up to their primary care physician and their doctor team.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Anybody else have any questions? Okay. Format for the public hearing will be as follows. I think I already did that. We'll go to the floor. First, before we do that, this is the only public hearing the planning commission will hold on this special land use request. All remarks will be entered into the record for Township Board evaluation. We are a recommending body, and the Township Board will evaluate our recommendation and make their decision. They are the legislative body. The Township Board will make a final decision on the special land use request. So at this time, anybody in the audience who wishes to speak for or against their proposal, you're free to come down now and do so at this time if you want. Going once? Come on down, sir. All I would ask is after you speak, make sure you sign in, okay? Give us your name and address for the record, too.
Mike Archbald, 8121 Rondale, Michigan. I got a question. I'm confused on, he didn't say he's going to change anything with the building, but what about the easement? Because it says he's, ingress easement is supposed to be 60 feet. It says north of 30 feet. He's already at the south. I just, my question is, is the easement going to be widened into there or no? Into the building, existing building he has off of Van Dyke? He's south of it. That's why I'm asking.
Yeah, there's been no, there's no change.
There's no change.
Proposed to the building outside at all. It's all inside.
Okay, because it just says that modifying north of 30 feet, he's already, he's south of it, that's what I'm saying. I just don't want it to be widened. It's, or is he going to widen it?
From what I've seen, there's no-
He's west of it, which is west of the road. The road's not right. So that's why I'm just asking. It's not going to widen?
Julie?
No, Mr. Turner, I think, I believe he's just reading the legal description.
Yeah, it's-
That there's a mean that that's what they're asking.
Okay, because it said, subject, I'm like, okay, is this going to change?
That's the subject address.
Okay.
And, and legal description.
Okay.
So there's no changes.
No adjustments to these egress-ingress, okay.
Building will stay as it is, as you see it today. Nothing will change on the outside.
All right. That's the only question I had then.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Make sure you sign in. Thank you. Are we going to sign in? Yep, right there, please. Anyone else who'd like to speak? Come on down. Come on, ma'am.
My name's Toni Decamp. I own the building next door.
Okay.
51424 Van Dyke, Shelby Business Center. Am I under the impression that you own the building now? You're not leasing anymore?
You, address the Chair, but go ahead, ma'am.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. My only concern, I think it's a great idea. In fact, if you need volunteers, I might be interested. I'm an RN myself. My concern is I've been trying to get a, on my side, Timberline in Van Dyke, I have a private park or private property sign on my back parking lot, and I've been trying to get the owners of the building next door, which is Home Instead, to put one on there, because I have a lot of traffic cutting through there. It's tearing up my parking lot. They've hit my internet lines twice now. Trucks have come through there. So it's slowed down coming from Timberline's side, but they're still coming from the other side. So my only request was to have, is to have that parking lot in the back say, "Private Property", no through traffic, so that we're not getting even more, I mean, it's fine, the people that are there, yeah, but we're getting people from the subdivisions going back and forth. They're getting into my dumpster. I had to put a lock on my dumpster. That's my main concern with that, is if I could have that put up.
So you're, the building to the south of where he's at, correct?
Yeah, I'm right next door, to the south.
Right next door.
I mean, buildings are real close.
I'll ask him about that, but yeah, I think he did mention that in the back, he was, people could drop off at the back and then pull through.
Right. If they work there or dropping somebody, if I'm talking about neighbors, it would help to have another private, you know, part, private, the sign just says, "Private Property".
Okay.
You can see it on my side. It says, "Private Property, no through trucks, no, no through traffic, no trucks or something." The only person that comes through there is the garbage. They have to, because my can's back there. But my parking lot's taken a beating, and it's more from neighbors. But I had asked previously, the people that own that building, I asked them before, and they didn't want to do it.
Well, I'll plead guilty. I drove through there on Sunday, pulled in and just drove straight through, too.
Yeah.
Because that's the exit, straight down and out.
Instead of going on Van Dyke, they cut through, which I'm trying to cut that down. So that's my only request. I don't have any problem with what they're doing. I think it's great.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Going once, twice? Okay, we'll bring it back up to the board. Julie?
Thank you, Chairman.
Sure.
So just a couple of minor comments here. This is, as Mr. Koppel explained, this is an existing site. It's .0, .803 acres, zoned 01. The building is approximately 3,000 square feet. The use requires special land use approval, which the applicant has addressed. The only other issue that I would have is under section 4.12, it requires outdoor play area. And with that, it states that in no case shall the outdoor play area be less than 1,200 square feet. Obviously, in this case, as Mr. Koppel explained, that is not required. So basically, just a variance from the zoning board of appeals would be required, Bob, or up to-
I disagree. I don't think one's required. The factor that's built in there is per child. If they're not going to have children there, then there's no need for the one per hundred. So I don't think we need to make them move to CBA.
Okay, that's fine with me. With that being said, then the planning commission would approve it as is.
That's it?
That is it.
Okay. Come on down, sir. Just want to state a couple of things. There is no change going to be made to the building at all. It's going to stay as it is currently today, correct?
That's correct.
No changes in easements, no changes, anything?
No.
Now, you heard the concern raised about the parking and the drive-through. What's your response to that?
I agree, especially with the dumpsters. We had to put a lock on our dumpsters as well, because people go back there. I have no problem putting a sign up that says it's a private drive. I don't know if it technically is a private drive, but I'd be more than happy to accommodate if that was necessary.
Okay.
I believe it's a thorough way. Is that correct?
No, it would not be a thorough way. It would just be private property.
Okay, then yes. I have no issue with that at all.
Okay.
Those signs can be obtained from the clerk's office.
Excellent. Thank you.
That's good. Thank you. Anything else you have, or that's it?
Done, thank you.
Take a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Planning commission's recommendation must be based on the following standards. Compatibility with adjacent land uses, consistent with and promote the intent and purpose of the special land use, compatibility with the natural environment, consistent with the capacities of public services and facilities affected by the proposed use, protect the public health, safety, and welfare, and the adequacy of public access to the site. Planning commission may recommend approval, disapproval, or table the request to evaluate the information we've received this evening. A motion at this time is in order.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Moore?
I move to recommend approval for site plan SLU 23-38 for Bert Koppel, Home Instead, 51432 Van Dyke Avenue, parcel number 23-07-15-304-022, located north of 23 Mile Road on the east side of Van Dyke Avenue, adult daycare facility. The applicant has met the standards in the zoning ordinance, including section 6.5, special land use standards, and must comply with all the planning commission, department, and engineering comments listed in this review. The basis for this motion, number one, the use will not result in nuisances for any abutting uses due to the nature of its limited hours of operation. Number two, adequate access is provided on the site. Number three, the proposed use of such location size and character that is harmonious with the appropriate and orderly development of the surrounding area and applicable regulations of the Office -101-